We'll call this meeting back to order. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Pugnay?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here. We'll now have our flag salute by Boy Scout Troop Number 262. Let us all stand.
Will everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guard, prepare to post colors. Color guard, post colors. Color guard salute. Two. Color guard, group. Color guard retreat.
We'll now have our invocation. Thank you, Boy Scout Troop Number 262. We'll now have our invocation by Reverend Andrew Green, Church of St. Paul of the Desert. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome. Haven't seen you in a long time.
Mayor and council members, a long time no see. They asked about you right after you left last night at the Temple Isaiah. Rather than a specific invocation, I have a meditation by a fellow named Edward Hayes from a book called Prayers for a Planetary Pilgrim. It's called Psalm of the Homeless. Adrift, abandoned cargo of a civilization that races headlong on success as interstate. Dirty clothes, dirty body. Unlike you who speed by, I have no bathroom, not to mention a home of my own. I'm your rent-a-family member, part of your Christmas gift family or a Thanksgiving meal relative, those special times when you recall my plight. But today's an ordinary day, the more habitual occasion when I'm the forgotten one. The Gospel Mission Kitchen preacher said that Jesus had nowhere to lay his head, but he wore a real live halo and rested in its light. I've got no halo in a packing crate or a dirty doorway is the place I call home. You're afraid of me and avoid my glance, fearful that my arm will extend with a please to become a panhandle. And I'm also afraid. I constantly live in fear of freezing to death, of being beaten or killed by some half-grazed alley hunter. Look kindly on me, for I'm a ragged refugee, a wanderer in the exodus of economics, a hungry hunted homeless hobo, a cousin of Jesus with nowhere to lay my head. Amen.
Thank you. We have another presentation this evening. But before you do that, I'd just like to say a special thank you to all of our precinct workers. As you know, yesterday, we had an opportunity to exercise our responsibility as citizens to vote. And for those who offered their assistance to make sure that we had that opportunity in the city of Palm Springs and for Riverside County, we want to express our appreciation to all of our precinct workers. Thank you. Mr. Eddy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I would like to introduce to you and the citizens this evening our new Director of Aviation, Mr. Richard Walsh. And Richard, if you could come to the microphone, please. Richard comes to us from San Francisco Airport. Before that, prior to that, he was in Pittsburgh. And I would like to thank a couple of people who assisted me in the interview process. I had invited both the Chairman of the Airport Commission, Chuck Chilid, and Palm Desert City Councilwoman Jean Benson, along with Al Smoot, the retired Airport Director and Assistant City Manager, Troy Bootsloff. And I, we went through the interview process, and Richard was the selection. And he's been here about two weeks now. He had his first meeting this morning with the Airport Commission. And Richard, is there anything you'd like to add?
Mr. Mayor, council members, and citizens, thank you for having me. That's it.
Have you brought some of this?
I don't know that I can. It's already great.
We're glad to have you here.
Well, hey, hey, hey. Have you brought some of that weather with you from San Francisco in the last 10 days?
I think I have, unwittingly so. I didn't mean to. I meant to leave it all there.
Welcome.
Thank you, Richard.
Well, we'd like to officially welcome you. Come up and meet everyone.
You're not gonna kiss anyone.
After you.
Welcome, Richard.
Welcome. Move to posting of agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you had before you was posted last Friday on the 27th of February. There was a supplemental agenda posted at that time concerning Sunrise Norte resale restrictions. You do have a supplemental agenda in your packets for that item. Additionally, the city manager is withdrawing item 14 on your agenda tonight. That's item 14 is being withdrawn.
Thank you. Closed session. Report by City Attorney, Mr. Alshire.
Yes, the closed session for the agency and the city. The items discussed involved real property negotiations concerning Desert Water Agency. We also discussed the South Palm Canyon property, the Stitch Real Property Negotiations. Both of those items, we gave a status report. No action was taken, direction for further negotiations. On the litigation, we discussed the Zuffa Letto versus City of Palm Springs. Direction was given concerning settlement negotiations. With respect to labor negotiations listed, we also discussed that item. No action was taken. With respect to the other items on the closed session agenda, we did not get to those items, although the council intends to go back into closed session to continue the discussion of some of those items at the conclusion of the regular meeting agenda.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Oden had to make a quick trip. He'll be right back. So in the meantime, I'm practicing. The Housing Authority, Financing Authority, Industrial Development Authority, Community Redevelopment Agency have no business. We will now move to public comments. Anyone wishing to speak on any items within jurisdiction of City of Palm Springs for three minutes. If you are here for a public hearing item, which is item number 12 only, if you'd please hold your comments until that time, that would be more appropriate. But any other items or any other discussion or comments, now would be the appropriate time to do it. We do have some cards. I will start off with, I'll read the first three, so if you would line up, please. Shirley Bush, Elizabeth Baker, and Carrie Allen.
Tell me when you hit the button.
I don't know how to work that thing.
Well, then I get four minutes. My name's Shirley Bush. I'm a Realtor with Mary Ellen Hillen Associates. After one year and eight meetings with our Housing Department and Legal Department, I feel these two departments need a good house cleaning. One, attention to detail is not there. Really concerned and neighborhood friendly, not there. In 1983, the city became involved with Sunrise Norte. The city initiated resale restrictions, units had to be owner occupied for two years, and created a 50-year leasehold. For the last 20 years, this 51 modular home community has deteriorated, due to the city Housing Department's lack of monitoring and enforcing the above. One year ago, I met with Mr. Raymond, and he said he had been trying to remove the restrictions for five years. Shortly thereafter, I produced 88% of all owner lender signatures as stated in CCNRs. Mr. Raymond produced a proposal that voided the CCNR requirements. Basis for his proposal was an owner would pay to the city $10,000 to remove the restriction. One year later, in eight meetings with Owners, Housing, and Legal Department, I can say that the staff focused on their hard-to-understand proposals, which would have created a financial burden to owners and administrative headaches to the city. The impact of these outdated and flawed CCNRs and the concerns of these neighborhoods were not a priority of the staff, just their proposals. The Housing Department has given my name and phone number to many of the owners this last year. My name and number was also given to the out-of-town appraiser for Sunrise Norte. He was told I could be of help. I arranged for him to obtain access to several homes in Sunrise Norte. After a few phone calls and faxes, and about three weeks later, he said he was finally able to access our local multiple listing network. He also mentioned, through his extensive research, he found a good deal on a lot in Desert Hot Springs and bought it on spec. This was our time and dime. The city paid $10,000 for this appraisal. We were paying for his time while he was acclimating himself to the desert. Sunrise Palms, where I live, needed no signatures to remove the restrictions. Three different documents were prepared before it was done correctly and finally recorded six months later. The city's leasehold in Sunrise Norte has only 27 years remaining, creating a burden of plus or minus $100 per month per owner. The staff has been aware of this for well over three years. They cannot obtain 30-year financing and have had difficulty in obtaining a loan, period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Baker. I was here in July to speak in support of our neighbors at Sunrise Norte, and I'm here again to speak against the staff proposal. This well-meaning program has been mismanaged for 21 years without any fault of these homeowners. The unwillingness to deal with it has especially created a hardship for the last five years, and I'm sure you'll hear from some of the residents. It's resulted in a hardship for these low and moderate income homeowners. Now, the staff proposal is to dump the problem back on the homeowners. Undoubtedly, that will result in some foreclosures of the least able and a burden on all of the homeowners. It is time for this council to, and let me say once again, because you stepped up last summer on behalf of three different housing areas, to step up with an equitable solution. Interestingly enough, the best proposal I've seen is the homeowner's proposal of their own. It's a fair proposal. Needs a little tweaking, but they want to remove the resale restriction, extend the leases with a purchase agreement. The purchase price can certainly be that which the appraisal price has already been done and paid for, and to increase the lease payments to what they should have been under the original agreement. That would require the option to be exercised for the full amount only upon sale or refinance. Notably, some of these people have already recently refinanced and certainly cannot do it again. But even if the purchase price and the lease payment increase every two years, that would be more fair than the staff proposal of making them buy it now, when they cannot do that. And please, assign the administration of any program that you approve to some competent management. Many of you have campaigned on the notion that you want strong neighborhoods and active participation by volunteers in the city. If that is true, then you must see to it that that attitude trickles down to staff.
Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Oden and Councilman. My name is Carrie Allen, and I live at 832 San Lorenzo. I have lived in Palm Springs for over 40 years and served on the Planning Commission for over seven years. I would like to commend the city, Palm Springs Planning Department, and also the Aconcaliente Tribal Council's Planning Department for the wonderful dialoguing that's happening in our city. I understand for the first open house regarding the plans for Section 14, 350 citizens took their time to come and learn what are true facts about the plans. I'm very proud to be part of this city, because we have always dialogued and worked with city and citizens, and that's why we're so successful. I would encourage the citizens that would like to learn more to come to the March meeting at City Hall. I see the proposal fairly close to what the general plans were actually 30 years ago, when I've served on the Planning Commission. This is an opportunity that most cities would love to have, a gift to be able to develop 180 acres in downtown without bulldozing. Don't go on what the media has said. Actually, there was a wonderful article today in Desert Sun about the proposals. But people need to come and find out for themselves and find out what the real plans are. There are no driving ranges, biking towers, roller coasters, and carnivals planned for our city. So I would like for our citizens to come and join all of us and to come together and talk and share their opinions. Now I will put on my other hat. Literally, I am the District Governor for Rotary International District 5330, which encompasses most of Riverside County and part of San Bernardino County. I am here to congratulate our city, because as you probably may know or may not know, the city council knows, that one of our police officers, Merritt Chesey, is in Taiwan right now, representing United States and our district as a goodwill ambassador. She was chosen one of the four members of the group study exchange in Taiwan. Second of all, most of you probably don't know, because the chief is very modest, Chief Jinderin this year has been selected by our district, even though he's a lion, but the Rotarians chose him. He will be one of the four speakers to 350 of our high school students on RILA, which is Rotary Youth Leadership Award, for a three-day conference, and he really is one that we think very highly of. I think we should, as citizens of Palm Springs, celebrate. So as usual, the chocolate lady brings the council people chocolates to celebrate our successes, because Palm Springs is wonderful, and thank you for your attention.
And thank you.
So I have your chocolates right there.
Our next speaker is Harold Stone, followed by Sergio Santo and Barcelo George. Good evening and welcome. You will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, Trish. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Mills and Mr., pardon me, Pugnay. Mr. Pugnay promised that I'd be notified about a meeting to be held tomorrow, and he followed through and did it. This is very encouraging to me, because it shows a lot of improvement on the city council, and I appreciate it. However, the age old, as you know, I've lived here since 1960. I've had my home here since 1960 in the same place. The city moved in and acquired the property behind my home and proceeded to build huge airport structures, car rental agency repair yards, and you name it, it's there. Motorcycle repair, fuel tanks, helicopters flying over our house. And I talked to Mr. Mills, and he is, I understand, trying to do something about it. But I think that the time has come. I handed out little plaits showing you that our home was there when the property behind us was O and GR. And I don't care what anybody in the staff says, my home was there before the airport was there, long before the airport was there. When I bought my home, the talk in the City Hall, because I worked in the city, was that a park, golf course, or resort hotel be built on that property for fly-in pilots, I guess you'd call them, anyway, fly-ins. Since then, we've had 10, 15 different zoning plans come up. But those little plaits will show you that the subdivision was there, the zoning was O and GR. They tried to change it to A-zone right up to my back property line. Can you imagine A budding R1 without a buffer? We fought and fought and fought. We finally got them to put up or approve an eight-foot block wall. It turned out to be six at one end and four at the other end. An access road to the airport, which is a thoroughfare now. I understand Mr. McCullough drives the work over. We should slow down. But it has become a major thoroughfare. The car rental agencies, although they are supposed to work from 8 to 8, last night, which broke my back, were unloading a truckload of cars at 12:30 in the morning. And I was in the Navy, and I've heard many an anchor chain go down the haws, and I can tell you, that was nothing compared to what that truck was doing. I called the airport this morning. They could do nothing. I tried to get the code enforcement person today, who was going to return my call. I guess he was too busy, because he never did. But gentlemen, I think you people, not you, the previous councils, when they changed the zones... Beg your pardon.
Go ahead. Your time's just about up. It is up.
Oh, your clock isn't moving.
Yeah, it was. It just didn't have my thing, and the time went out. So I was just gonna give you another couple seconds, please.
You, the councils, said that when they made this A-zone, there would be a landscaping strip, an excess road, another landscaping strip, and an eight-foot block wall. And I ask any one of you, I think Mr. Mills has looked at it. I know Mr. McCullough drives by there. He should see it. None of that exists, a six-foot block wall, lousy landscaping, and noise pollution constantly. This has nothing to do with airplanes. That's tomorrow. But it has to do with ground noise. Please do something. It's been quite a few years. I'd like to die in peace in my house. Thank you, gentlemen.
Sergio.
Sergio Santo, I'm here tonight as President of the Coachella Valley Taxi Owners Association. It's good to see you again, council. After last Monday's Executive Committee at CEBAC, and their response to the issue of advertising on taxis and to send it to Palm Springs to write the ordinance, however they wanted to do it, the CVTOA wanted the city council to see how our industry would respond after, if they voted favorably to this and passed the ordinance. This document right here, we wanted you to see after the fact, the future, before it happened. And this is the Coachella Valley Taxi Owners Association Advertising Information and Rate Sheet. This basically has everything we intend to do on it. And we wanted to show you, the council, everything we plan to do in the future, that there's no surprises. And we wanted to know that we do, our association puts a lot of faith in its integrity, and that's about it. And I hope you guys appreciate that we're letting you see the future first. Thank you.
And thank you. Barcelo George? Good evening. Welcome. You will have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Jorge again, and thanks for the opportunity to talk with you guys. It's about my property. I live in Sunrise Norte, and I've been living for long in this house. And the deal is, I missed the opportunity last year to refine my property for a comfortable payment, like a $600 a month, something like that. And because the lease, because the lease was just 20 years old, I mean, left, years left. And the thing is, I would like to see as soon as possible the consideration from you about the price on the land, because I really need to buy this land, because I need to invest some money in my property. I don't have air conditioning, and the plumbing is in pretty much bad conditions, too. But I don't have room to invest in these areas, because my mortgage payment is so high right now, and that's why I'm here, to asking you about considerations on the price of the land. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Spira, followed by Sheila Toffer.
Yes, thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening. I too am a homeowner in Sunrise Norte. We're asking that you take into consideration our several pleas in regards to a fair price to purchase our lots or the lease extension, which we have been somehow overlooked by you over the last few years, and we've been asking. We've also had to pay the property taxes on our leased land, along with our homes, in addition to all of the Palm Springs improvement and service taxes, which receive no benefits from, the mowing of all the lawns on the exteriors of every other place, et cetera, et cetera. from, the mowing of all the lawns on the exteriors of every other place, et cetera, et cetera. So we're paying money out of pocket for that, and for instance, with the bad windstorms that we had last year, several of us suffered a lot of damage, such as the fences going down and things of that nature. And I know for myself and some other ones with our fences, that our insurance companies would not cover certain things, because they considered it decorative, if it was in your front yard, that you had a fence, or certain other places, because we're on leased land. And all we're asking is that the city council take into consideration the fact that we are proud homeowners. All we want is to know that we can live in our homes, we are medium to moderate income levels. I myself am on a fixed income due to disability. I can't afford to pay this big amount of money to own my property, and it's time that the leases should be extended, or give the people the choice to buy the land, but at the price that they should have been able to buy it for, back when they should have extended the leases. And I'm asking for you to please take that into consideration for all the owners of Sunrise Norte. Thank you.
Good evening, and welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, how are you guys? I'm kind of going to reiterate what she said. Basically, we're looking to get a fair price, because as you know from many of the meetings, Mr. Mills and Mr. McCullough have been, too, we have discussed the different things that have been overlooked in the area, and I don't want to go over it again. But if we do agree on a price tonight, I do want to mention one thing, some of the people there are not going to be able to buy right away, and so I'm hoping that if they do decide on a price tonight, and we go through with this, that they're going to be given some time, from this day, maybe a year or whatever, to have the opportunity to buy this land, because some of them may not be able to get financing right away, because some of them have just financed, refinanced, or they just don't have the money, and it may take them time to get the finances. So I'm just hoping, and I'm, again, asking for reasonable prices. You can hear some of the people speak today, you can see their incomes are not large, but having the resale restrictions removed, and also giving us a price I think that we deserve, which is what we offered, that we'll be able to make our neighborhood a much nicer neighborhood to take, own the land. And everybody in the neighborhood now has been fixing up their properties. We're not rich people, we're working people, but we're trying to put time into our homes to make our neighborhood a nice neighborhood, and having the resale restrictions, owning the land makes a big difference in the attitude of people to want to keep their neighborhood a nice neighborhood. And I can see the changes coming, just since we started going into these procedures, into these meetings and discussing this. People are getting excited about the prospect of having the resale restrictions lifted, their properties becoming worth more, and this is giving them just more pride in their properties to have a nicer home and a nicer neighborhood. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Buddy Diamond, followed by Pam Gendy. Those are our last two cards I have. Good evening and welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to see people that I had the smartest to vote for in action these many weeks that I've been attending the city hall meetings, and to me, you're a winning team, and I'm very proud to be a part of it as a resident of Palm Springs, at Sunrise Norte. I would also like to say, well, the main thing in my mind is a young lady named Shirley Bush, who has gone beyond belief as far as being a shoulder that everyone's been crying on, and look forward to all the brightness that could come of this, at least put the lights in the right subject. And she's such a wonderful person, I'm sure I've been blessed to meet her and become a friend of hers, and admirer of her strength and her devotion to all the people, not only people in Sunrise Norte, but I gather the other people who come in touch with her in these other developments, and probably every day in her everyday life. And she certainly deserves some sort of accolades that would go beyond the thank you, but she would sell for thank you, and consideration that she is a realtor. And when the time comes that anyone decides to sell, or whatever, real estate to have in mind, I would feel that she would be the only one I would want to turn to, because that's her living, and what she does is strictly out of her gut feeling, and she acts all the way to Sacramento, in my behalf, as a owner on CHAP financing, with the state of California being a partner. And thank you so much for this opportunity to chat with you.
Thank you. Ms. Gendy, good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmen, and staff. My name is Pamela Gendy. I live at 5301 Waverly in Palm Springs, and I'm also a Realtor with Mary Ellen Hill. I'm here concerning the Sunrise Norte resale restriction. The city 20 years ago initiated CCNRs with the following restrictions. One, the city imposed a resale restriction with a formula that would keep this tract of 51 modular homes in the low to moderate bracket. Two, owners had to occupy for a minimum of two years. For the last 20 years, the city has not consistently monitored or enforced these CCNRs. At the study session of June 11, 2003, Mr. Raymond said, referencing the resale restrictions, quote, "Enforcement over the years has been spotty at best, also flawed, out of whack", end of quote. If the enforcement has been spotty for the last 20 years, what makes the staff think that they can turn the clock back and now start over? To obtain an approved sale price, an owner has to provide the city with the proposed offer and escrow instructions, and owner cannot call and say, "I am thinking of selling. What price can I sell for?" In January, Lot 42 sold, the city's allowing price was $117,000, a two-bedroom, one-bath, no pool, 840 square feet. In January, the owner of Lot 49 was contemplating paying a portion of state CHAP loan. The city's allowing selling price was $92,837, a two-bedroom, one-bath with a pool, 840 square feet. With the city's formula, the same home with a pool has to sell for less money. In Sunrise Palm, same formula, the city's allowable price was $30,000 more than what the units were actually selling for, considering there are 360 units. This was an administrative waste of time and money. This is one of many examples of how flawed these restrictions were and are. The CCNRs clearly state that the city can waive in whole or part at any time by recording a waiver executed by the city. I would repeat what has been said before, the city's leasehold in Sunrise Norte has only 27 years remaining, creating a hardship of plus or minus $100 per month per owner, and the staff has been aware of this for over three years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak in public comments, please come forward at this time. If there's anyone else, please come forward, because after this gentleman, I'm going to close, unless there's someone else who would like to speak. Please give your name to the clerk.
Good morning, Mr. -- good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michael Broderick. I'm a resident of Sunrise Norte. I haven't had the opportunity, because of work restrictions, to actually come and speak, but my brief comment is that today, the council members have a wonderful opportunity to make the American dream a reality. Not only is homeownership, but also the land where those homes reside. I personally don't own the home, I'm lucky to be married to the woman who does. And we're a young family, and we hope to provide as much as possible to our children and to our children's children. But the start of that is really homeownership, and the land where the homes are. And because of our limited income, and because of our age, we have limitations on what we're able to do now and how we can plan for the future. So my brief comment is, is you have here wonderful constituents who are asking today to give us the opportunity to realize the American dream and the dream of actual homeownership here in this wonderful city of Palm Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we will close public comments at this time, and we will move to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Toft.
I just need a clarification on item number 10. Is there any financial impact? Or are we just accepting, approving the plan? Does that plan have any financial impact?
If I may, members of council, that's just a receive and file, but there's no discernible financial impact that I'm aware of. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pugnier.
I'd like to pull item number eight for further questioning of staff.
Okay, we'll pull item number eight. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple corrections on the minutes, and I would, I've got just a question on four, and a question on three. Do you want me to go to the minutes?
Yes.
I'm looking at minutes from 12:10:03. I'm on page three. It's strictly a typo, second paragraph about the middle, on the far right-hand side, it says FRO, and it's supposed to be FOR. And the other one, I can't figure out, which is on 2404, page seven. I think it might have been in regards to my testimony, and I know I didn't say that word, the third paragraph, first paragraph, third sentence from the bottom, about in the middle. I'd like the city clerk to please pronounce that word for me. That was my question on the minutes, and then...
Word 10.
And then on item three, I just have a quick question on, and I don't know who, if the fire chief addresses that, or David, if you do, or I'll throw it at you, and you can defer it. On the third page of our staff report, it deals with the funds available as follows, and the last one, the 156502, says, "Portion of sale revenue from surplus ARFF units", would you just comment on that for me, as to what that means?
Yes, as you recall, we received grant on to purchase the new ARF units, which is the special equipment used by the fire department for the airport, in case there is a fire on an airplane. Our old apparatus was to be surplused and sold, and since that was decided that it would be sold, the revenue would accrue back to the airport, as I believe, and since this will benefit the airport as well, those dollars are allowed to be used in this equation. Thank you very much. And I think, Mayor, I mentioned item four also, but I do not have a question on that. I answered it previously.
Okay, so we don't have to pull any item other than item number eight?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have another question. I mean, this is a clarification also. And maybe this is just because I'm new, but when we vote on the warrants, I have no idea what we're voting on. And I would like to see another column, which would explain what the expense is for. I don't know if that's possible in our accounting system to... I know there is an account number, but without having a chart of accounts or going to each chart, each warrant that I'm looking at, and that we're fiscally approving, is I don't feel comfortable in knowing why we're, not knowing why we're paying $4,000 for cinema services. You know, I really would feel much more comfortable if there was another column that just related it to something, and I don't know if that's possible in our current accounting system.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, what you see here, this is pretty much, this is a syllabus, if you will, of how our system is set up. Certainly, that's not to say it could not be modified. If I could speak with the treasurer and finance director, and get back to council with what is the possibility. If we can't do it in this format, then we will find another vehicle that will be able to get that information to council members.
I would suggest, because she's really seeking, from what I understand, some clarification. So I think if you met with her and answered some of her questions on how some of that is set up, that might address at least a part of it.
It's not often that I disagree with you, Mr. Mayor, but I do disagree with you on that, because there is, and I'm looking, what section is the warrants on?
Eleven.
Eleven. So there's all that I'm receiving, all that we're receiving, is the check number, the issue date, the vendor that it went to, and what that name is. And there's some substantial expenditures. I mean, I certainly don't care what we spent $6.50 for at Audiobooks of America, but I do want to know, you know, some other things, where we did Cinema Partners for $4,950. And I don't think just telling me who Cinema Partners is going to make me feel comfortable. I really would like to be able to tie the check to something. So if that's not possible in our current system, then I would not feel comfortable in voting, and I'll ask to, you know, remove myself from the votes on all of the warrants. Thank you.
And if I could have a week, I'll have a solution. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I do have to abstain on some warrants as well. 994742, and then Trish, 43 and 44 after that, and then 99832, all business-related. And, Mr. Mayor, I did find my question on number four.
Please state it.
In the text on our page two in our report, Mr. Reddy, in the second paragraph of written information, the last sentence, which is the third line from the bottom, says, "This fact continues to show that this department is falling further behind in a required annual maintenance of city streets." I would like an explanation of required, if I may.
Council member, I believe that required is more of a self-imposed program that we have, but Marcus Fuller, our assistant city engineer, is here, and I would ask him to comment further. Thank you.
A typical required maintenance program is to apply a slurry seal every five to seven years, and as long as you do that, the streets will remain in generally good condition. Some streets, though, that do fall apart for certain reasons, will require more than a slurry seal. But the city's standard practice has been to attempt to slurry seal each city street within five to seven years, and we're actually falling behind, and it's becoming more like nine or 10 years, only due to the shortage of gas tax and Measure A funds that's available for maintenance.
Thank you, and I understand that my... And I, and I understand that my, my, my question is really the use of the word required, because it's, it's only required by our, by our maintenance program. It is not by ordinance, it is not by, I mean, it is a policy. It is not, when I look at required, it means somebody is telling you, you have to do that. And so I just think that that word should be modified. So, thank you.
Thank you for the observation. Are there any other questions on the consent agenda? If not, then we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent agenda with, other than item eight, which was pulled for further discussion.
Okay. And we have a second by council member Mills. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. Passes unanimously. And staff report item number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. The request that's before you is one additional extension on the SMG tourism contract. The short answer to this is, there are several pieces that are still question marks. Before I bring a final contract to council, the subcommittee is being scheduled to meet to go through the final list of, of contract issues. And at that point, I would hope that we could get a contract to council well before the three-month period. We just have that as the outside estimate.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, my, my question was, as I'm, as I'm looking through this, you know, we're on our fourth amendment to this agreement. And I would hope that we would be moving during this next period certainly to give stability and to figure out what exactly is happening here. So knowing that the timeline that the subcommittee is going to meet really answers my question. But really, it's the fourth extension, which is, seems like many.
And, 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 Mr. Mayor, I, I think council does deserve an explanation there. This contract was simultaneous with the, the convention center contract. And we, we set this one aside because it wasn't as, as germane and as immediate as the convention center contract, which had a lot more benefits and perils in it. So we put this one aside while we took the several months to do the convention center. That is complete, and now we're turning our attention to the tourism contract. That's for the delay. In retrospect, we probably should have had the first amendment several additional months, and then it wouldn't have been the fourth time. But I can assure you, this will be the last amendment you see.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy.
Thank you. Motion?
Move number eight.
Second.
Moved by council member Mills and second by council member Vogt. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt.
Aye.
Mr. McCullough.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. It passes unanimously. We move from our consent agenda, and we will move to our public hearing. Item number 12, staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a conditional use permit on a cell tower. And I would ask Mr. Evans, Director of Planning, to give a staff report on the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a cell phone antenna permit for Verizon Wireless located at the Desert Water Agency property at 1200 South Gene Autry Trail. The property is zoned industrial, and the proposal is a 60-foot-high lattice tower. The property is a fairly large parcel, part of the overall complex that the Desert Water Agency owns. The proposed cell tower will not only have the antenna for Verizon Wireless, but the Desert Water Agency will also use the tower for some of their communication needs, so it has a dual purpose. The planning commission reviewed this at its meeting on February 11th. By a 6-1 vote, recommended approval to the city council of this application. And let me show you the plans. We have several different exhibits, and I'll start on the far right. The project is located on the DWA complex, which is located here with Mesquite Avenue in this location, Gene Autry Trail. This is a mini storage warehouse facility, Oasis Water Park. This is the tertiary treatment plant owned and operated by DWA. And the Tockwoods Creek Golf Resort and Percolation ponds are further to the south. Properties to the west are all industrial. Properties to the north are industrial. The cell tower site is located approximately here on the property. The east property line of the DWA property is located here. The Ernie Noya Indian Oasis Resort project is here. First phase office building is right here. This is where the groundbreaking ceremony was held, to give you an idea and point of reference. The plan includes constructing the cell phone tower and a minor building in this location. It's about 900 feet from Mesquite Avenue, 500 feet from Gene Autry Trail, 500 feet from Oasis Water Park, 1,800 feet from the nearest condominium to the east. So it's really set well into the site, pretty well screened just by distance, even though it's a 60-foot-high tower. The proposed tower design is a standard lattice tower, shown in this location here from one angle, another angle here with a small building. And again, it's 900 feet from the adjoining, or nearest property line that you can see it from a public right-of-way. The planning commission reviewed this. They felt due to the site conditions, the fact the adjoining property owner, Ms. Noya, submitted a letter in support that a lattice tower was appropriate and not requiring screening, since there's really no trees around it, would be the best way to deal with it. Lattice towers, when viewed in a distance, tend to blend in a little bit better than steel column towers. And in most places that you would look at this from would be from the north to the south, and you'd have a mountain backdrop. The planning commission felt that screening would really not be necessary, and that eventually the DWA campus is going to expand this way. We have a plan approved for a building in here, and eventually there'll be activity here. This site will be landscaped with a golf course, and it was an appropriate use of the property. That completes our staff report. We'll certainly try to answer any questions.
Are there, yes.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Evans, you might note as well that there is a, a storage project in plan check currently for the property just north of this, which would even further shield this from, from Mesquite.
This particular site right in here has been approved for a storage facility, and it is in plan check. It will add to the buffer. There still is another parcel of land located right in here that is undeveloped. But eventually, with all the activity in that neighborhood, I think you're going to see the street frontage developed, and then this tower will be very difficult to see.
Are there any other questions based on the staff report?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yes, Doug, I'm just curious if you can recall, the dissenting vote in the planning commission was for what reason?
You know, I was getting ready for the meeting tonight, and I looked for the minutes, and because of the turnaround time, we didn't have them. My recollection, and I could be wrong, it had to do with the lattice tower and lack of screening. The planning commission's been pretty consistent about stealth towers, meaning palm tree towers, or, you know, really planting landscape around them. In this particular case, because there was nothing around it, anything you add to it will only accentuate it.
Okay, then at this time, we will open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak to this issue, please come forward. You will have five minutes. Please give your name to the clerk.
Good evening. My name is Dale Stubblefield. I'm with Delta Group's Engineering, representing Verizon Wireless. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable city council members. Just wanted to thank staff again for their help and support on this project. Desert Water Agency has been planning on building a lattice tower on this property for monitoring their well sites and activities. And with Verizon Wireless, they're able to, you know, share some of the costs in creating this tower. The one abstention from the vote from the planning commission, if I may just answer that real quickly, was the fact that the proximity to the airport, and I thought the height of it would interfere with the, with the airport. There are some power lines on the northern property line are about 80 feet high, and so we're only about 60. That was really what the, what the question was, the one abstention from that day. Dave Luker from the Desert Water Agency is also here in the audience. If you have any questions of the property owner or of us, we're happy to answer. Thank you.
And thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this public hearing? Then we will close our comment section. Counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I noticed in the minutes of the airport commission that they did have some discussion about the top, and Doug didn't mention that this tower will be lighted on the top, or lit, whatever the word is, on the top. And so I'm wondering, is that a flashing light, a turning light, or, I mean, and how much light is that going to give off?
You know, we, we have them around town. It will be a, you know, a, a red, you know, flashing light that, you know, you'll be able to see, but I don't think it'll be a significant change. We've got a fair amount of activity in that area and some lights. This is fairly close to Demuth Park. But because of the proximity to the airport, the airport actually recommended the light as opposed to the FAA. The FAA, you know, looked at it, it meets their, their approach criteria relative to height. And as the applicant indicated, you've got power lines that are taller. So if a plane's out of, out of alignment that far.
We're in trouble.
There, there's a big problem about to happen, or a pilot making a miraculous save. But it's the type of thing, this is fairly close to the airport. And, you know, the planning commission is, is not real thrilled about lighting, so they do ask questions about it in this case. Obviously, the, there was a question from one commissioner.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pugnay.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second with comment.
Second by Mr. Mills, and your comment.
Comment has to do with the, with the lighting. I don't, I, I, I don't see the purpose of it. If you've got power lines, which are certainly much more of a, of a, of a problem to, to airplanes in this area that stretches across that whole distance along the side of that 18th fairway and, yeah, all, all along there, which is behind this, what good does a red light do on something 60 feet tall and something 80, 80 feet tall doesn't have a red light? So my concern is, are you creating a problem in that someone thinks they're clear of something when another, you know, 300 feet, and all of a sudden you run into something 20 feet higher? So, but that has no red light. So I don't think it makes a lot of sense to, to me. I would certainly defer for safety, but I, I think, I think you're asking for trouble here, is, 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 is the way I see it. So I don't want this particular issue to hold up the, the approval of this, but I would like, if, if, if Mr. Pugnay wouldn't mind, if he could amend his motion to, to see about perhaps eliminating that requirement.
Well, before we do that, we have the director of the airport here, if we want to hear his comment.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
If you would, please.
Excellent idea, Mayor.
I'd be happy to address that. As a, as a pilot, typically if you are in trouble and you see clear underneath you, you're always looking for a landing spot. So if it's at night and you don't see a flashing light, the perception of a pilot is, okay, I can put my plane down here. If you do see a flashing light, you know enough to stay away from it. So the height issue is, is but one issue. The, the light is another indicator to a pilot that thinks this area is safe. The light would tell him it is not safe, and he needs to find another area, an alternate area to land his, his disabled aircraft.
Would, would that light make, excuse me, would, would, would that light make a difference whether it was 60 feet in the air or on the ground? To a pilot?
To, to, to a pilot typically in the air, you know, you identify certain obstruction lightings with certain obstructions. If it's on the ground, it typically blends in with the ground clutter. You don't, you don't typically see that from the air, but if it's, if it's in the air, you can use your, your slant angle to see that this is in fact an elevated structure, and more than likely, it has a base, and pilots typically identify that with antennas.
So, so you think it's a good requirement?
I think it's a very safe requirement.
And you don't think the fact that 300 feet away, you've got 80-foot power lines that don't have lights on them, it's going to be a problem?
Well, no, I don't. If, if, again, if I'm in the air and I'm looking for a place to land my plane, and if I'm familiar with the surrounding area, this is a new structure, those power lines have been in place for a while, those power lines are also on my, my navigational charts. So.
I certainly appreciate your comments. Thank you.
What a way to make an entrance. You probably set us up for that question.
He and I have been working on that for a long time.
And I'm putting a light on the top of my house.
Mr. Mayor, based on the testimony by the new aviation director, I will just second it and shut up.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? Roll call.
Ms. Vogt.
Aye.
Mr. McCullough.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. It passes unanimously. And we will move to council comments, announcements, inter-agency reports. Counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to give a quick report on the SEVAC Human and Community Resources Committee. We had a meeting last Wednesday, and unfortunately, there was not a quorum, so there were no decisions made. But they are continuing, we are continuing with the, the study of the childhood obesity awareness and prevention. And we're also working on a survey for the homeless population that's going to be carried through to next year, where this year it's a survey, and next year there's going to be a recount in the Coachella Valley because of some problems with the, with the, with the census. The other thing that we're looking forward to is the expansion of the trauma intervention program, which I spoke about last week, which is going to expand to include teenagers. So I would again recommend that everybody contact SEVAC for information on how to get involved, especially if you have a teenager that wants to do some volunteer work. And we will be going into setting up our priorities for, for the coming year within the next month or two. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? On the 19th, along with some of our council members, I attended the memorial service for Mike Morantz. On the 20th, I attended the Shakespeare Finals at College of the Desert. And yes, I did participate, so at some point, you'll have an opportunity to, to see me perform. How about that? I also attended a scholarship program for the Poit Foundation, which is a scholarship program for the LGBT community at our Northern Trust Bank in Rancho Mirage. I attended the finality dinner for, which was the dinner for the Black Historical and Cultural Society at the Riviera Hotel. I attended the Blacks Bo, Black Box Theater at Palm Springs High School, and along with council member McCullough, we attended the Palm Springs Power Press Conference at the stadium. Did you attend?
No.
Okay, I spoke at Catherine Finchey, Catherine Finchey School Assembly regarding Black History Month. On the 25th, I spoke to the Board of Realtors. On the 27th, I attended with our new Director of Aviation, the, the airport, a tour of the airport and viewed the security issues at the airport. I spoke to a group of children. issues at the airport. I spoke to a group of children at Desert Sunshine School, where I was the cat in the hat.
Did you eat the green eggs?
That was last evening. Along with Councilmember Mills, we attended the Indian Canyons Golf Resort Groundbreaking, and I was reluctant this time to tee off. But Chris?
That's a nice word.
But you're just jealous because the last time I had a better shot than you, and I'm a novice, you see. I attended the Black History Month Pre-Parade Gala and Award Ceremony held at the Fantasy Springs Casino, and attended the Black History Month Parade along with members of the council, and the Town Fair, which was held at Ruth Hardy Park. Just to the members who are working on the parade and the Town Fair, it was just exceptional. The parade has grown tremendously. I want to thank Palm Springs Parades that worked in the coordination. The event at the park was just exceptional, and we're hoping next year that more of the citizens of Palm Springs will come out and truly enjoy this parade and the celebration. I attended on the first interviews for the new General Manager for Sunline, and last evening, I read Green Eggs and Ham to students at Vista Del Monte, and I did a welcome at Temple Isaiah, the Jewish Community Relations Event, and it was a discussion on Passion of the Christ. And there was also a meeting for the Community Benefits Committee, which is the, for Riverside County, which is the distribution fund for, that the tribes have been paying into since ninety-nine, and I was elected the Vice Chair of that committee. So we're looking forward to that event, and I may be unable to attend the next meeting, so may want to send someone in my place, which we will discuss, because they will be a non-voting member, but at least will be represented. Okay, we'll move to our legislative action, item number thirteen. This is an ordinance for second reading and adoption, Municipal Code Amendment Parks and Recreation Areas Prohibited Conduct.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I'd like to move the ordinance, waive text, and just read the word, the motion.
Title.
Title, pardon me. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pugnay.
This would be an ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending Section eleven point four four point zero six zero of the Palm Springs Municipal Code relating to prohibited conduct in parks and recreation areas. Ms. Vogt?
Aye.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It is approved unanimously, second reading, Ordinance for Municipal Code Amendment Parks and Recreation Areas Prohibited Conduct. Item number fourteen has been removed, and we'll move to additional legislative items. Staff, report, please.
Mr. Mayor, there is one additional item, Sunrise Norte resale restrictions. There are basically two issues. One was the extension of the leases. The second was the ability of those individuals to purchase those parcels of land. In November of two thousand and three, council addressed the issue on the lease extension and extended it for sixty years. At our previous study session, council addressed the issue of the sale and the purchase of the parcel lands and gave staff direction. Councilmember Mills did remind me that in a very short timeframe, it was expected that this would matriculate back through the system. So what's before you this evening, in keeping with that timetable, is a formalization of the direction the council gave us at this study session. Now, what this does is formalizes that council has approved those sales to the individuals, if in fact, they do want to purchase them, and the terms of those purchase. The city attorney has indicated that how that will manifest would be in individual purchase agreements, and I would defer to him to give more details on that. But the resolution itself will be just affirming the direction the council gave us in the study session, which is allowing purchase of those parcels. Thank you.
I think in terms of how we view the process, it isn't, we've done a lease amendment to extend the terms, so I don't think we have to mess around with the lease documents anymore. If the council was interested in providing the option to purchase the property, this resolution would authorize a process of doing that. I did understand some of the comments and concerns about exactly how that would work. Right now, we have an appraisal as to what the value of the property, those lots are, which is slightly over eleven thousand dollars. What the resolution doesn't determine, and you might want to give us some direction on, is whether you would want to allow people to come in for some period of months from now and acquire based upon that appraisal, or whether it's a more long-lasting thing where we have an appraisal now, and if somebody were to come in a year from now, we could do an appraisal of the value at that time, and a person could buy for whatever the appraised value is then. That needs some clarification, then, as to whether you want to create a one-time window for this acquisition, or whether it's an ongoing thing. The only issue being that at some point down the road, the current appraisal becomes out of date, and we have to do a new appraisal to establish a new value.
I have, my first question is, if we, is that tonight, we're just giving direction, whatever is, whatever you work on will come back to us for the final vote?
We do have a, I think in the materials that we're handing out to you, there is a draft resolution that does authorize selling the lots, and it says that all terms of the lease continue in effect. So you could adopt that resolution, and that is the direction. The resolution, the one thing it's not quite clear on is whether, you know, once this appraisal gets out of date, are we going to do a new appraisal and establish a new price, or do you just deal with it when it happens?
Who would pay for that appraisal?
Well, the city paid for the appraisal that was done.
So each time an individual comes in to purchase, we would have to do?
Right. We didn't really envision that. I mean, we went out and we did an appraisal because that was the value of all the lots at this point in time. It would become a little bit of an issue if each time somebody came in, we had to go do a whole new appraisal just to deal with one.
Could we do the one-time appraisal, and it goes up five percent each year after that or something to that effect?
CPI.
Yeah, or CPI, so that we don't have to do an appraisal every time?
You could establish that. I mean, we could put right that provision, the resolution in terms of setting market value. There's probably some point in time, some number of years out, where you'd want to go appraise again and establish a new value. And we could even put in here that some direction, that at some point in time, that be done to keep the value current.
Mr. Pugnay?
No, I think that, one, what was the cost of the first appraisal? Was it ten thousand dollars, which I've read in the literature, or not?
Jay?
John Raymond, our Director of Economic Development, can address that issue.
I think the appraisal was actually fifteen thousand.
It was, okay.
That much?
It certainly wouldn't be prudent to do that every year, but I would agree with Mr. Alshire that obviously property values are appreciating much more than the CPI, and hopefully, they will continue to do so. So it would be advantageous to set a period out there, whether it be five years perhaps, to reappraise the land.
Would, so would the escalator, are you thinking of CPI, or is there some other indicator in terms of real estate value that you?
No, I think, I think the CPI, for a period of five years, would be a good escalator than reappraise.
Okay, Mr. Mills?
Mr. Mayor, my only comment on that would be that I want to make sure that we set the system up so that we can adhere to it, and not show ourselves off as mismanagers of our own will here. And to that, what I'm saying is, if we say reappraisal after five years, if we have an open-ended purchase, which I think we should, which is going to be what my recommendation is, anytime someone wants to purchase, they can purchase for whatever that price is, which would be adjusted after five years. I just want to make sure that every five years, that we do that appraisal, and it can be amendment, so it's not a full appraisal, I would think. And so we don't have to go through the situation where somebody comes in after five years and three months and says, I want to buy my unit, what's the cost? Well, you know, you have to wait sixty days for an appraisal, dah dah, I don't want to do that. I want the city to be on top of this issue. So somewhere, somebody writes down in their calendar, after so many years, whatever we end up with, that an appraisal is ordered, and we just keep on doing that until we don't own any of those units, if that ever happens, which I do not think it will. But, just to review what we're looking at here, and I think it's, we heard from comment tonight that the lease has not been extended. Well, the lease has been extended, and it's a sixty-year current lease. Anybody that wants to refi now can certainly do that. That restriction or that problem has now gone. So I think it's important that everyone understand that. And as I mentioned, I feel that the program should, for those who want to continue the lease and the fourteen dollars and whatever it is a month lease payment, and for some people, that's very important, and I understand that, that they be able to stay in the program for as long as they choose to stay in the program. If someone wishes to, and with that goes the restrictions. If someone chooses to want to get rid of the restrictions, their method of doing that is to purchase, and it becomes a flat-out purchase for whatever this rate ends up that we have, and then those deed restrictions go away with that purchase. And my goal, as I mentioned before, is to keep this thing as simple as we can possibly make it, so everyone can understand what we're doing, and let them understand that we're not forcing them to buy, that they can stay in the program, just as it is with no, they don't even have to think about anything that we're doing here if they choose, if they don't want to buy. They don't have to worry about anything. They know their lease is extended. I mean, yeah, their lease is extended, and so what I don't want to do is complicate anybody's life, including the city's life here. So I do think, when we go through with this, for the remaining units that stay in the program as lease units, as affordable housing for our goal, that we establish a very comprehensive system with checks and balances as to how the money is, how the lease payment is collected, whether the city sends out a notice reminding people to pay their lease, like you do on a normally, like normally, just some means of making sure, number one, that the lease monies are collected, that somebody doesn't get in the rears by how much ever it is. And if they do, then we either need to notify them that they're in the rears, and hopefully, they'll take care of it. If not, and if it's a financial problem, then maybe we need to have an assistance program, which I'm sure we've got something that people could apply for. But I just want to get it cleaned up, make it consistent, and make staff responsible for it. And I don't know if it's JR's department, if it's Thomas Department, or who's department, but somebody that, so we don't hear the problems that we've had in the past, and people get their questions answered right away, and it's just become simple. And I think, Mr. City Manager, I think that's an opportunity for you and your department heads to figure out what makes that simple. And I would suggest that in that, perhaps you may want to get two or three members of Sunrise Norte to sit in with you and talk about how that system works. And, but I think it's, I think it's a, I think it's a very good opportunity for us to respond to a problem. And I don't want to dwell on the past. I want to grab this issue now, get it taken care of, simplify it, and move this along as fast as I think we can. And I think we can move it pretty fast, pretty fast. We have a problem of six lots, as I understand it, that were sold, that the property was sold when it should not have been sold, and I don't know how we clear that up, but we need to clear that up some way, shape, or form. And I think that's probably the city attorney's problem, to help us be a friendly city to however, who knows how it happens? We don't really care how it happened or why it happened. Let's make sure it doesn't happen again, and let's resolve those six lots. We get everybody back online, so.
Could I respond to that, or make some?
Ms. Vogt has some comments.
No, I just wanted to add on to what Chris is saying, because I agree, but I think that also, we still have the CCNRs, which is not only collecting the lease payments, we've got this two-year minimum occupancy and all the other CCNRs. And I don't, if we're going to, if we're going to trust ourselves to set up an accurate system for collecting monies, we also have to set up an accurate system to see that we are on top of the CCNRs, because the sale of that six, those six properties wouldn't have happened. But I understand a number of these properties are now rented. We have no way of knowing when they were sold, and I think there's a lot of things, and I don't know if we're just creating another bureaucratic mess for ourselves, or whether we can actually do this. And I'd kind of like to hear from staff a little bit of, because I do want to look back, because if we don't learn from our past, then we're not going to be able to correct it in the future. So, I mean, I don't even have any idea who oversaw this, who oversaw this and who was supposed to stay on top of this. I'm not asking for a specific name, but what area it fell into.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Vogt. I think this is interesting for us to set up a program that's similar in many respects to the one that we're trying to clean up. And I would just want to hear from Mr. Reddy specifically, and not necessarily at this time, but a report in the next couple of weeks of how this program will be monitored and who will be responsible. Because at some point, I'm sure when we initially did this, that someone was designated to monitor this program, and it got away from us. And while we can look at all of the good parts of doing that, that has not traditionally been our strong suit. So if we're going to redo this, I want to make sure that we are going to do it correctly, and not to, you know, simply make the mistakes again of the past. So it'd be real important to me to know how that's going to happen, because if it's not going to happen that way, and if we are unsure, it'd be best not to do it. And that's okay. Mr. Alshire?
What I was going to add, from the comments of all three of you, it seemed to me that one thing you're asking for is, in essence, a protocol, a written description of how staff administers the program. And to the extent we have some practices that we could do better than we've done, that could be included in that written protocol. But that would be set in writing. We could bring that back so that you can see it, and then from then on, it would be administered in accordance with that written document. The second thing I was going to acknowledge is, we actually really haven't looked into the situation on these six lots. I mean, we're aware of it, but we haven't really given creative energy to what can be done about it in the enlightened enforcement manner that I think Councilmember Mills was referring to. So I would, you know, if JR works on this protocol, I will work on the issue of those lots and come back to you with what our options might be in terms of that. So if that, if doing those two things kind of went down the track of how we continue administering this, because again... administering this, because again, by this resolution, you're creating the opportunity to sell, but meanwhile, we do have to administer the program under these leases that currently exist, we wouldn't be going back and amending it or changing it, so we need to make it clear to deal with the administrative problems you've noted. In terms of, and if, if that addresses those points, in, in terms of the direction I kind of hear coming together on this sale, I do have a couple specific questions to clarify exactly how that would work. For example, if there is a sale, typically, when we're a redevelopment agency and we have a sale, you know, you split cost in term, the buyer and the seller, share cost, et cetera. In this program that you're thinking about, do you, would you, is there some direction you'd want to give on how you want to deal with the cost, closing costs and so forth of, of doing the sale? So that would be an issue in my mind. A second issue, on if we're going to escalate on the basis of CPI, when do you want to apply that factor? The appraisal that we already have, the appraisal that we're working off of is now, is it six months old?
It's about five and a half months.
Okay, so, so it's almost six months old. Are we going to go six more months and then apply the escalator? Do you want to create a longer window for the first period of time, and, and not apply the initial, the first CPI escalation for a year? So that's a second question that I would have. The, we talked about that it being CPI, and then we talked about a five-year reappraisal. So I guess, in, in terms of trying to understand how that resale would work, I, I would have those two questions for you to think about.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
My suggestion on the current appraisal, I, I would think if that appraisal, we, we would hold that number for a period of two years from the date of the appraisal, so that, for another year and a half, essentially.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
I think that's fair. Okay.
I, I, I also think that, I mean, it's important to, to note that this, that this project, when it was, was initiated, was, was, was the right thing to do at the time. It solved a lot of problems, it, it became a replacement area for the Prairie Schooner site, and I think another trailer park as well.
There were four in the downtown.
And what it did is, it, it allowed us to, to do some redevelopment work with, within our city, and yet give people an opportunity to move to a newer area, newer residences, and, and I don't know if any of you remember what the conditions were of the Prairie Schooner, and I, I forget the names of the others, but there were several, as JR mentioned. They were in very, very bad shape, and this system, which is more than just leasing lots, was what the city did in assistance to allow all that to happen, and it was a very good project, I thought it was, it was very well thought out at the time, and I think it is, it's just probably outgrown its need at this point. And, but I certainly don't want to take anything away from the people that put that original package together, and it, because it really was a great idea, and it was, and it took a lot of work, and, and it has worked out well. I also think that there are some common area features out in that area, correct JR? One of which is a wall that has some problems. We have some community block grant dollars coming in, that is city property, if it's on the HOA, correct? Then that would, that would be eligible for, for block grant money?
It's, it's, it's city property, I think, if it's, well, certainly if it's in the public right of way.
Yeah, and I think if, if we could look at if there's an opportunity to designate a portion of our block grant monies to upgrade that, I would certainly like to look at that and let the committee perhaps respond to that as well, and, and that would be in a, a city-initiated request, but I think it's, you know, it, it, it would be an opportunity to upgrade the area, that probably wouldn't happen if we didn't do something about it at this point.
Can I just add something to that?
Sure.
If you recall, in one of the meetings with the residents, they did ask, you know, if the, if the proceeds of the land sale could go into some of the improvements in the area too, and, and actually, Section 3 of the, of, of this resolution, you know, deposits that money, because the land was purchased with block grant money back in there, and that, that could be a source of, you sell five lots, and it's a $50,000 wall, you know, you have your $50,000 there to, to go ahead and do it. And the other side of the wall, I believe, is where the, the park that came out of the Burnett project is going to be going, so there's a, you know, there's some, there's some public infrastructure rationale for, for doing that, so.
Mr. Reddy? I guess my concern is this. Chris, Mr. Mills, I thank you for, for your comments on, on the history of how we arrived at this point. I would agree, I think that this was a program that was a good response to the time then present, but since that time, we have experienced a lot of budget cuts. And I guess when we're talking administratively about how this will be handled, that's, my question is this, do we really have the staff to monitor this? Now, I know we can say yes, and we can assign it, but the reality is that if these people already have more than their share of responsibilities, and we simply superimpose another responsibility that will require this kind of tracking, we need to know if it's going to require addition, if it's going to affect the budget. And if so, then we need, we need to understand that going into it, is that a realistic expectation?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I will deliver to you a detailed report on the implementation, but in, in general, to address the question in, in an overarching manner, you know, the core of any policy is the implementation, and you think about that before you put it into effect. I believe it's doable, I believe through technology that exists today, much more than did in the 80s, it's doable, and what I will do is, I will put it in place, I will have council to review it, and if you're comfortable with it, I can assure you that we will implement it that way. Now, statistically, in the next five years, when it comes time for the appraisal, I will not be sitting here, so what I also will do is make sure that my successor, and the successor of John Raymond, and Tom Canar, and Troy Bootsloff, will have some indication that these things are flagged at the time that they need to be. If that, if that helps address the question.
Are you giving notice?
Statistically, well. Okay. Yes.
Ms. Mayor, I just want to say one thing about implementation. We do, we do monitor these, these sales. I have a staff person, Marina Karas, that does this, she's doing the Eldorado program, she does rehab program. Where the, where the flaw in the spotty implementation on it is, and it's a flaw in the way it was set up, in that the restrictions are buried in the CCNRs, they're like Section 10 of the CCNRs. If somebody goes to buy or sell a property and they don't read the CCNRs, if the title company and the escrow company doesn't read the CCNRs, because a lot of people don't, they buy property.
They don't.
And they don't. There have been instances, especially in the 90s, when people bought and sold property, bought these properties without coming to the city for the assignment of the lease, or for the, or for the, the, the recalculation. When people do call, it's usually an escrow company, they say, "I need that, it's one of the conditions of closing, we turn it around in a couple of days, the assignment goes to Dave to sign," and, and so, it, it is monitored, but there, but in probably almost every property there, there's a gap in time, and that has created problems when you get to doing the calculation, because you don't have the last sale, or you have the sale when they bought it, and because you're working on CPI over a period of time, that's, that is one of the things that's caused problems over, over time. So, I'll, I'll work with the city manager on, on coming up with an implementation report, but I don't want to leave you tonight with the, with the impression that, you know, nobody's been monitoring this over the, over the years, it's just that some of the, some of the sales, some of the transactions have gone through, and we don't have, we don't have a proactive mechanism out there in the, in the escrow community that says, "If you ever get a Sunrise Norte thing, make sure you give us a call." And so we rely, and Dave talked about this in one of, I think, many of you weren't here back in June and July when we talked to council about it, but you rely on, on the sort of good faith of the real estate community to, to, to implement these things for you when you put them in CCNRs. When we were doing Desert Dorado and Quail Point, our, our alternate recommendation was to take those, we had an alternate set of restrictions, and we were going to not put them in the CCNRs, we were going to have a standalone, you know, resale restriction document, that in any title report, it would be flagged right there, and, and, and it would say, "Restriction on resale of property." And so you couldn't, you couldn't ignore, ignore it by not reading the CCNRs, it would be right there. So that's, you know, that was our solution there, but we went in a different direction on that.
Mayor.
Ms. Foote.
I just have a question about, from Mr. Raymond, the, the Realtor who spoke at the end of the public testimony about the differences in sale, it's my understanding now that if, if the, the homeowner now buys the land, that the CCNRs don't exist anymore, is that correct?
That, that, that is a proposal before, if they buy, they're out of there.
Then they can sell for whatever they want to sell for.
They're out of that provision.
They're out of that provision. And so, in, without that, without having this in the past, the sales, what was the difference in, in, in the sale through the, a person who was in the CHAPs program and someone who wasn't for the same kind of house? I, I, I didn't understand that.
I don't know, I don't know if it related exact, well, there, there's a discrepancy in the CHAP program, and, and between the city's policy and what the state's policy was, and Shirley talked about it at one of the meetings, that the, the state required that if, if a sale came in, they had to review the sale price, they'd hire an appraiser, and if the appraisal came back and the sale was 5% less than market value, they disapproved the sale. Well, obviously, our restrictions were, were put in place at around the same time, actually before the CHAP program came in, to, to restrict the sale price. So there was an internal inconsistency between the requirements of the state program, that said the, the seller needs to get fair market, or at least not more than 5% below fair market, and our program that over time was designed to really hold down sales prices in order to preserve affordability, and that's a really valid point on her part. Now, today, there are only two people left out of, anticipated 30 originally, that were, were going in on CHAP, that still have the CHAP loans, and the state's done away with the CHAP loans, it was a shared equity loan, and, and there's a big penalty in, to sell, because the state gets a good, like 48% of your equity when you sell on the CHAP program. And so, most of the people, when they had an opportunity to, to obtain other financing, remember, this was built in like 1983, when interest rates were, you know, 17%, when people, when rates came down, people had an opportunity to sell or refinance, they, they got out of those, but we have two left that are still in that program. Now, over time, as, and again, it, it goes back to, you know, if we've gotten a restriction and we have records on what the previous sale price was, and we do the CPI calculation, you know, what's happened, and it happened in the other subdivisions, is you have big, you have big differences between, between what you might be able to sell your house for, and what Mr. Mills, who's your next-door neighbor and has maybe a bigger house or the same house, would be able to sell for, because of the sales history on it. And this is going back to the 80s. And, 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 and there were, and there were big differences, and, and in essence, what it did is it penalized homeowners that were compliant with the program, because if you complied with the program over time, and if the person you bought it from complied, and the person you sold it to complied, then over time, the price of that house was held down. If somewhere along the line, somebody in 1987 sold the house, and, you know, in a rising real estate market, and set a higher base, then from that point on, the base was higher, and somebody else was, was able to sell, you know, down the line, able to sell. Now, throughout, throughout most of the 90s, it was not an issue, because there were houses there that sold in foreclosure for $36,000. And when we do, when, they'd come in, we do the calculation, and they could have sold it for $67,000, but the market was, you know, 36 or 44, or something like that. Now you're seeing prices of 90, 100, 117, 125. And it's an issue, because now people, you know, in addition to the lease issue, which we solved in November, people are bumping into that, you know, "I could sell it for more," but now the city's, because of the resale restrictions, is, is, is holding down the price, and people are, are really feeling affected economically. And so that's, you know, that's, and that was certainly true in the other three subdivisions, like Quail Point, where houses now are selling over $300,000, and Desert Dorado, where they're over $200,000. And Sunrise has been a little slower to catch up, but even they're, they're going up now. So, and this has not been this, quite the same.
Mr. Puglia.
Mr. Alshire, you asked for a couple guidance issues. One, I agree with Mr. Mills, on a date, year and a half, whatever, for now, but to simplify, make it like a June 30th, 2005, or end of a quarter, something that's easy to remember. The other issues that you mentioned regarding costs of sale, you know, seller does typically pay for most things, title insurance, natural hazards disclosures, HOA transfer fees, really the one main cost that is split is the escrow fee, so perhaps we use standard real estate principles, I think we'll be okay.
That's fine.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I find this whole resolution quite peculiar, and I, and I find the process to be very inefficient. I was served on the subcommittee for Sunrise Norte, I have a file here that's about an inch thick, we had proposals, counter-proposals, city proposals, final, homeowners' proposals, all kinds of points addressed in here, which I have not seen addressed, I'll get to the resolution in a minute. I had made a specific request at the study session for, with regard to the inventory of low and moderate housing, where we haven't, we're, we're below what we're required to have. I asked for, who requires it, what are the penalties, what are the prospects for us maintaining that, what's this going, what's this going to do to that? I've seen nothing regarding that issue. I think the homeowners that came here to speak this evening anticipated, based on what was in the paper, and also based on what this additional legislative item states, that we were going to approve the terms of parcel sales with the homeowners. I believe that they probably anticipated that would include specifics on what the sales price would be, because serving on the subcommittee, that was really the bone of contention, was how much money we were going to require to purchase the lots. We're going around in circles here, we're really not ready to apparently make that decision right now. I have, in the past, repeatedly, and apparently have fallen on deaf ears, asked that we not get materials presented to us right here at the meeting in the yellow folder, unless the city's on fire and we're the only one with a hose, and it'd be, and be expected to vote on this. We have a two-page resolution with a bunch of wherayses on here, which we have not had the opportunity to read. I have no idea what's in here, I have no opportunity, while I'm sitting up here, to read this and study it, because then I will have my ears turned off, and I won't be able to hear the public comments, I won't be able to hear the staff report, or whoever else is meeting on council. So if staff anticipates that we're going to have important items like this, that really don't address what we spent months in, in meetings trying to resolve, they're hallucinating, because I made this point before, I cannot vote on something like this resolution, which is really kind of a do-nothing resolution, other than giving guidance to staff, which we did at the last study session, to come before us with a proposal. I can't vote on something I don't know what it is. And this is very frustrating, we spent about 45 minutes on this, it's going to come back, we're going to have public comments again, we're going to go through the whole thing, and, and we're going to have to, at some point, address these particular points. And so I would like to know, what is specifically, now that I've vented, what about the low and moderate, low-income housing inventory that I requested report on before we were going to consider this matter?
We, we, we've been researching that, and I can, I can answer that tonight. Back in the 1983 housing element, which was, the program was just actually in the middle of being implemented, there was a long section in the housing element, which is our, part of our, our general plan, and it's a report that has to be filed and approved by the state. There was a long narrative description on, on the intent of the program, and how the program was laid out, and, you know, I mean, it was, it was originally intended to be, like Mr. Mills says, of the relocation area for... says, the relocation area for like 500 or 459 mobile home units in, basically in Section 14. There was, they anticipated they were going to build 741 units on 100 acres in that area. What happened is, in the 80s, they built Sunrise Village Mobile Home Park, 115 mobile home units, and these, it says 52, we think there were 51 units, that were actually constructed. And then, the original developer didn't build anything else, and they quit, claimed the lease back in 1991. When the city updated the Housing Element in 1993, these units, the Sunrise Norte, were not included as listed as affordable housing in the 93 Housing Element. When we did our Affordable Housing Markets, we did Affordable Housing Needs Analysis in 1998, and then we followed up with Affordable Housing Market Study in 1999, they based those numbers on the 1993 Housing Element, which was the city's Housing Element at the time. So it was not picked up, these are not, we're not in the 93 Element. The 2001 draft of the Housing Element that we're working off now, that was submitted to HCD last year, does not include Sunrise Norte. It, and it was not, and it was just kind of, you know, again, it was sort of left out in 93, the consultants that we used in 98, 99, didn't go back to 83, they didn't pick up on it. And it's not until we were doing the, in the deals on Coyote Run and on Burnett, where we were sort of untangling, the land ownership up in that 100 acres is so tangled, and we've worked on four deals up there, untangling that, that staff realized that that tract was actually purchased with, you know, 164,000, or some amount of CDBG money, which created the problem that Dave talked about in the last meeting, where you have CDBG that paid for the lots back in the 80s, the city used an awful lot of CDBG out there, actually to help build the mobile home park as well. And it creates a situation where to get out, and they're in a $12.49 lease that doesn't escalate, and it's been 1249 since 1991, after the developer quit claiming, and the city sort of froze the lease in time, and has not had an escalator since. So now, 13 years later, after that lease, people are in a, basically heavily subsidized lease, on land that the city acquired for low-income housing, that is not listed in our low-income housing, our official low-income housing inventory, but where they were requesting to be relieved of any restriction. Now, like in redevelopment, redevelopment law says, they don't care about the sales price, except that it needs to be affordable to persons of lower moderate income. So what you do, then, is you test the affordability of the house, based on the income of the buyer, and you set guidelines there. They don't say, well, it can go up by CPI, and that sort of thing. That's the sort of resale restriction that we're normally used to. So the, to conclude my answer, the impact of, over time, if five or 10 of these sold every year, you would have to report it in the next iteration of the Housing Element. And the Housing Element has a section called "An Analysis of At-Risk Affordable Units." And what the state asks you to do is to itemize, you know, what the units are, you know, what your plan is for replacing the units, you know, what it would cost to replace the units, and, you know, any other programs that you have out there. But we are, in that next draft of the Housing Element, we'll have, as far as affordable units go, right next door, 66 brand-new units from Coyote Run, we'll have Vista Sunrise up with 85 units. Now, the issue of cities always being under their affordable housing need, there is a process, and Dave talked about it in February, that's SCAG, we're members of SCAG, and we're subject to, and they get the numbers from Housing and Community Development, which is a state agency, and we have this requirement to build, it's a number. Is it a hard and fast requirement, it's a number. But to build 1,502 housing units in Palm Springs between 1998 and 2005. Now, that's not 1,502 affordable units, actually, most of those units are above moderate, those are market rate units. We have the highest number of, our highest RENA number of any city in the Coachella Valley. Why? We're not exactly sure, we spent a year and a half trying to figure that out, and we considered appealing it, you know, Riverside County appealed their number, they brought lawsuit, San Bernardino County did, because they had numbers like 50,000, I mean, they had huge numbers. And that was unincorporated county, but we chose not to, because what the, what SCAG told us is that there are guides, if you have your best effort, and what you need to demonstrate through your Housing Element and through your RENA process, is that you have not created impediments to constructing that housing. If the market doesn't support it, the market doesn't support it. And ironically, I mean, you know, we're in the middle of our biggest building boom that we didn't really see in 1998, 1997, when this started. But, you know, we're going to, as far as the overall number, we're going to meet that number. Are we meeting the number on affordable units? We're making our best effort, you know, we've, you know, we've done the deal with McCormick Baron on Vista Sunrise, we've done a deal with Coachella Valley Housing Coalition on Coyote Run, we're doing an infill program, and that is normally adequate for a city to meet its affordable housing needs. So I don't know if that really answers your question, but that was a long answer.
Okay. No, it really didn't answer my question, but I'd like to see a written report on this before we consider this matter again.
Mr. Mills.
Mr. Mayor, I certainly respect Mr. McCullough's comments, and I don't personally think that we need to approve a resolution at this time. I think we've given very firm direction here, and I think it's now up to staff to come back and bring it to us in the form we've kind of outlined. As Mr. Pugnay and I kind of discussed, I thought we pretty much had agreed upon that we were going to use the appraise price, simply because anything else, to my thought, is a gift of public funds, which we just really cannot do. But, I mean, that was what my understanding was, I hope the rest of the council was that way, even though Mr. McCullough may not have been. But in respect to Mr. McCullough's comments, I think if we could get from staff a date certain that we will see this back on the agenda, so we can let the Sunrise Norte residents know that date, and make sure that we respond to that date, I think we've done what we need to do. And I don't know, I would prefer the date to come from staff, to what they're comfortable with.
Ms. Elshire.
In terms, you've given me very good direction in terms of revising this resolution. I could have this ready for your next council meeting. However, the issues about the general housing report could take JR a little longer to put together a report on that. So, Jared, you probably need more than, will you be ready to come back at the next meeting or the following meeting?
Well, you know, if I had to have it ready to be in your council packet for the 17th means I'd have a day to do it, I mean, tomorrow. But I could, if you wanted...
We don't have a meeting next.
No, the 17th.
The 17th.
See, our deadline is the Friday after regular council meeting for the following meeting.
So that sounds like, we were talking about the first meeting in April.
I don't think I want to delay this further. It appears, without having adequate information here, that probably this low-income housing, moderate housing issue is bigger than this discussion that we're going to have on Sunrise Norte. So I don't want to make that issue stop this from coming, because the homeowners, they deserve a resolution of this quickly.
It's a very good point, and this whole process of processing our Housing Element, I think deserves a broader discussion, and we didn't address your question about the penalties, and I don't want to go into that further tonight, but there are some good, there's some good information we could give you on that. So if you wanted us, as a part of the Housing Element, to come back with a report dealing with that another time, we could. In terms of what we've got before us, it would be your choice. I could get this resolution revised and include it in your packet for your next council meeting. I believe that I got direction on everything I need, in terms of what the elements of this would be. You may also, another alternative would be to adopt it tonight with the revisions that you've directed me to make to it.
Okay, I just have one thing in relation to what Councilmember McCullough has said, and that is that the residents submitted a lot of information, and I'm not sure if our conclusions, if they feel like we responded to those requests and that information. And I think that's very important. So sometime between tonight and when this resolution comes before us again, I think it would be important to respond to the residents, that they understand how we arrived at these conclusions, and why, and at least they know that we have responded to them. I think that's very important. And you have your direction.
And Mr. Oden, I would say, I think they need to have an opportunity, a time opportunity to review what this is, so when they do come back for public comments, which I would expect them to, that they're informed as to what we're looking at at that time.
I agree.
So, you know, I think they would need it at least a week. And again, I don't want to pressure staff at this point, other than the fact I want this to be timely, but give yourself enough time to address this appropriately, so we've got all the information that we need, and we can comfortably make a decision, including how you're going to continue to administer it. So, don't, I mean, I think if we have to wait till the 1st of April, I think that's okay. The first meeting in April, so.
All right, you have, are there any other comments, and you have direction? Thank you. Any added starters?
Done.
Reports or requests?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
City Council reports or requests?
I had a question about this, the scrap program, and we seem to be the only city that's not on the host committee, and was wondering if they've applied, Mr. Reddy, if they've applied to us for any support?
The scrap committee.
The scrap gallery.
I'd have to get it back to you on that, Councilmember.
Yeah, because I mean, I really would like to see something in support of this. And then also, I noticed in Mr. Evans' report that there was a comment made about an Araby neighborhood variance, and I was wondering if we could have a little bit, I always feel very nervous when something's happening on Araby that the neighbors protested on, and we don't have a full report. Could we have a report on the Araby neighborhood, I mean, on the Araby neighborhood variance, where there was a reconfiguration of three existing lots? And then, the last thing I had was, I wanted to compliment, I've read a number of letters that staff write to the citizens, and some of them, I felt, were very strident, but I read this one that Scott Miccell wrote, and I thought it was an excellent letter, and I think he should maybe give some lessons on letter writing to our citizens, it was a great letter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A couple, I guess, requests. First one is for Mr. Elshire. It's regarding liability issue. If you have a private road, and I'm talking about Keweeah Hills Drive, which is a private road, which leads up to hiking trails, if a citizen, or tourist, or guest is hurt while being on that private road on the way to Palm Springs land and hiking trails, how are we covered? What's our liability? I received a request from a homeowner, and then another gentleman who owns a lot up there, and it's really just of a clarification of what we're to, if something were to occur on a private road within the city, what is, how are we covered? Well...
Did you want a response now, or?
It was, if he's got an immediate response, but I was really, you know, more of a, just a written clarification, so I can share it with some of those neighbors up there.
Thank you.
The second report is a report, I don't want to create a new report, but on traffic on Indian Canyon and Gene Autry from I-10, and whether we've done traffic studies, what's the plan for the future for those two corridors, potential funding. I see both of those issues is huge issues as the city expands with development. So I'm certain that there's plans have been done and ideas thought out, but yesterday at 2:30, when I'm coming down Indian Avenue, and it's two and a half miles, I think it's something, a visioning thing, that we need to look at. So if those reports exist out there, I'd be pleased to see them on that corridor. And thirdly, although I won't be there Saturday morning, I wish the youth league a great start to their season, and I believe you, Mr. Mayor, are throwing out the first pitch.
I think that's going to be Mr. Mills, I'll be out of town.
Okay. I was going to say, I was a tad worried that it might be a little bit like your golf drive.
Oh, not to worry.
I feel better with Mr. Mills. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President.
Real quickly, I'm going to read some excerpts from a Building Department weekly report from February 6th, and it brought to light something that, in our effort to be business-friendly, kind of spells out a problem to me that I think we need to deal with, and I don't know particularly how to deal with it, although I may have a suggestion to look at, but it's regarding inspections. Says, inspections are continuing to be rolled over due to the acceleration of workloads. Over the past week and a half, we have had to roll over 90 inspections. Now, a rollover means, we try to do them on the day after they're called in, and a rollover means it goes another day. In the construction process, that throws you back a day every time. And when you're trying to implement and keep people moving and keep construction schedules on time, that's a problem. And I know we pride ourselves, and the Building Department prides themselves in getting the sometimes same day, but at least next day inspections. And they, simply for staffing reasons and our workload, are not able to do that. Mr. Duckworth writes, "Our concern is the ability to provide good customer service for tract developments as well as the private sector. Without additional staff, our quality of inspections will be greatly impacted, and could result in errors and omissions." And to that, you know, we have looked at supplementing the Planning Department, and we've looked at supplementing the Engineering Department, I just don't think the Building Department should be overlooked. But I'm not saying to do hires necessarily, but I, because I'm not, I don't know what our, how long this particular thing is, this phenomenon that we're experiencing right now will last, but is there a potential to privatize some inspections? In other words, hire inspectors, there are several inspectors that work independently throughout the valley, and I just wonder if there is some potential here. And my guess is that the developers would be willing to pay any difference in cost if they could be assured of getting an inspection when they need it. And if there's some way to make this work, I just, I don't want our reputation to get hurt here, of giving next day inspections that we've always done in the past. And, you know, to be 90 rollover inspections is really, you know, that's... And, you know, to be 90 rollover inspections is really, you know, that's, I mean, there's an indication of an overworked department, that's for certain. But let's see if there's some way creatively we can address it. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I'm having a senior moment. I'm glad our new Director of Airports is here, because I did have something I wanted to know about. When we were doing the contract at the airport, we said that there would be a public hearing. I've been getting a lot of complaints from citizens about noise, and wanted to know about the Phase 1, 2, and 3 airplanes that were supposed to be flying into Palm Springs now, which I'm assuming Phase 3 were the less noisy planes. And so I was wondering if we'd set a hearing date yet, because I don't think all of our citizens are aware of the changes in the restrictions on the hours of operation, and some kind of conversation to address some of the noise issues on the homes that are not in that noise abatement area.
Would you like that as a study session item?
I would like it as a study session item, and also set up as a public hearing at some point. The other thing that I wanted to address is the, we're now going into slurry seal, and I had the opportunity to meet several women contractors who have mentioned to me that they're usually not favorably looked upon in the bidding process in the city, and I was wanting us to look into what our policies are regarding women-owned companies and minority-owned companies. I'd like to know if we have any policy on that. And then also, I'd like an update on the lighting from the Desert Regional Medical Center parking lot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is it now.
I would like for us to agendize the housing issue that Mr. McCullough brought up. And I will bring back a report, which I have given, on what's been going on with the interchange at Indian and Gene Archery, but I will give another update on that at our next meeting. And Mr. Mills, I just want to comment on your request as well, which I think is really outstanding. I think, though, that a request, you know, if a department is experiencing, especially those departments that we've recently looked at, if they're experiencing that kind of turnover and demand, I would, I mean, that's not a stretch, you know, it's something that we have done at different times, anyway, for them simply to make that request to the city manager, which, if that's what they need to do, and it needs to come back to us, then that's fine, but I do think that that's an excellent idea, and something that maybe once we get something formal, we could say that if we ever get to a point like this, by all means, just bring it to us immediately. But I agree with you. And just like to say, I've received a lot of very positive comments about the landscape on Gene Archery. You know, it's been a while, I've kind of waited to see if anyone would say anything, but...
Makes me smile.
Yeah, I think it's really nice, especially the smaller ones that look like the mountains. At night, they look like that there's water on them. They're really cool, so. Another great amenity and expansion of Palm Springs beautification, so, thank you. Staff reports or requests?
There are none.
Our next regular meeting will adjourn, and our next regular meeting will be March 17th, 7:00 p.m. Next regular study session will be on March 10th, both preceded by a closed session at 5:00 p.m. And we have a joint tribal council meeting at 6:00 p.m. on the 25th. And we will adjourn into closed session, that's right, for...
For a half-hour meeting.
Yes.
After...[1707.42]